Hey, welcome everyone to the regular meeting of council for Monday, March tenth, twenty twenty five. We'll call the order, the meeting to order, please. And the first item on the agenda is that the agenda for the regular council meeting on March tenth, twenty twenty five be adopted. Counselor Martin, thank you. And Counselor Hanson, all those in favor? That was Carrie. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is that the council now resolve itself into the committee of the hall. So make that more, thank you, Counselor Benson and Seconder, please. Counselor Hanson, all those in favor? That was Carrie. Thank you. And this afternoon, we have some delegations and I would just like to welcome our first departmental verbal update, and that would be Enrico from the airport. And he is online today. So welcome, Enrico.
Yeah, good afternoon.
If you would like to do your update, that would be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes. Good afternoon, everyone through the chair. I'd like to provide a brief update on the activities for the Trail Regional Airport. First of all, passenger counts for the month of February, we had a total of one thousand one hundred and sixty-one inbound and outbound travelers, which is slightly up from twenty twenty-four where we had one thousand and sixty. Now, this month, we had eighteen cancellations in total, which resulted in six bus trips that was put on by Pacific Coastal to shuttle people to and from Penticton, which would have covered twelve of the cancellations. And the bus will continue to run until the end of March. Had a lot of good feedback on the busing route for folks that are needing to get back and forth between Vancouver and Trail. So it seems to be working and people are very impressed with it. Secondly, we'll be finalizing the B cap grant application this week or submission next week or the new master plan. We've received numerous amounts of letters of support from within and surrounding communities. And finally, the IT department this week should be receiving a demo camera to make sure that it interfaces with the airport's webpage. These cameras, I believe I spoke last time, are required to monitor our approaches from the north and the south for weather conditions and are extremely important for for private and commercial aviation. Once the testing is complete, we will then start sourcing for new cameras. And that's all I have for the moment.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council? Okay, thanks so much for being here today, Rico.
Thank you, Council.
Uh, next item on the agenda is corporate services and we have Counselor, General Manager Butler.
Sorry for that. So I have full intentions to have the bylaw enforcement or increase the bylaw enforcement report to you for March the twenty-fourth. I've been conducting performance reviews on some of our new hires and those who are my direct reports. And I've concluded a reclassification on a new job description for what was the position that was titled Secretary to the Corporate Administrator. And we renamed that to the Legislative Services Clerk. Along with this new, the incumbent is keen and is currently taking courses in local government administration through the LGMA. And you will also see the Legislative Services Clerk attending committee meetings to take formal minutes of those committees and also acting as the manager of legislative services in their absence. Tomorrow, exciting day for me, we will finally see the burnt house on Reservoir Road starting to come down. So that will be nice to see. It's been over a year now since that house burned. So it's been a while. And I will be away next week, starting Friday for a week's vacation. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Can you name the Legislative Services Clerk? I can have an idea. Is that?
Ms. Burke.
Is that still a unionized position?
It is.
Okay, any other questions for General Manager Butler? Okay, thank you. On to Museum Archives and Visitor Center Manager, Sarah Benson Lord.
Hi. Okay, I'm met with a phone call rather, the Program Officer for Building Communities Through Art and Heritage. This is the Community Anniversary Fund. I attended the, not the Silver City Days Committee, but last to sort of pitch the idea of our one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary celebration. So I will have a report for that committee coming up. There's some opportunity there. We have to be really clear to make this a very distinct event if we choose to tack it on to Silver City Days. Or we maybe do a one-day event a little bit later, recognizing that capacity is going to be stretched next year with all of the events going on. I'll have a report very soon for that committee. Our Tourism twenty, Tourism Guide twenty twenty-five, we're nearing our content deadline. So Claire and I have been working on that. And we meet again with Atelka at the Times this week to finalize some of that content. We've got a new cache of photography, which will be great to inject into the future just to make. And a lot of things have sort of changed around here, too. A lot of name changes, business name changes. So we're getting our finger on that pulse as well. Our summer students, hiring for summer students has gone out and yeah, we're excited for another busy season. There are some changes coming through Destination BC for the Super Health Training. I'm excited to see what those will be. And I'm hoping it's condensed about fourteen hours right now. It's a long time of training. So I'm hoping that they're going to condense it because that's the feedback for most trainers. We've also submitted our twenty twenty-five Visitor Center Strategy. This is part of our requirement with Destination BC to secure our fifteen thousand dollar annual operating grant to have a visitor center in our space. And that's what I'm working on now. I, too, will be away for the majority of next week for some medical appointments for my daughter.
And that's it? How many summer students?
Two, two visitor services representative downstairs and they sort of are that first point of contact into the building. And museum, museum assistant, got some big projects on the go with our collections, hoping to start minimizing our collections this year.
Okay, okay. Any questions from council? Okay, thanks, Sarah. Okay, next is our Communications and Event Manager, Claire, Sarah.
Hi. Well, through the chair, I'll provide a brief update on what I've been up to lately and some things that I'm thinking of. Been working on some, lots of advertising for the gyro concession that closes this week. Silver City Days, road closures, there was like a tree that was taken down over on Oak Street that was interfering with a power line. And one hundred and twenty-five years defining Trail's identity and brand a little bit stronger, which is ongoing work with Sarah and Sam at the library, as well as an external contractor graphic designer. We have lots of inquiries lately from the media outlets and the new outlet Castanet especially. We really appreciate all the, you know, inquiries from these outlets and they're sharing information and news related to the city of Trail. It's a great way to get information out to our residents and it just takes them on, but it's a question from different information required for these inquiries. The website, we're preparing to renew it this year, gonna have to be done by December thirty-first or our, we won't be able to update any of the content on, that end of life. Your upcoming events, Silver City Days, May seventh to eleventh, Canada Day, July first, it's in the road. Pride, August twenty-third, National Day for True Recovery Ciliation, September thirtieth, all events that I'm having meetings on already. As Sarah mentioned, the visitor guide, we're wrapping it up. And Bobby supporting that a little bit as well with just checking business licenses and things like that and making sure we have the names up to date on all the different businesses. And I've been working a bit with Public Works on kind of trying to update our information and get more scheduled information out to people, homeowners about things like frozen water lines, not just homeowners, but residents, renters, things like that. So hopefully next year, we have a notice out at the beginning of the winter and that kind of lets people know, hey, if you live in certain areas in Trail, you may be more susceptible, for instance. So prevention and that means, and then also working with RDKB, bear-proof garbage bins. Is the season now, we're gonna see some bears waking up and keeping catch basins clean as well. So these are all things Public Works is kind of working with me on providing the information for. And just worked a little bit lately with Sarah on our social media and trying to strategize how to centralize it because with so many spread out accounts, it takes a lot of resources to manage all those accounts and create content for them. So we're looking at centralizing some of that information. That's everything for now.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Go ahead, Counselor Hanson.
In regards to the website revamp, is it going to, or is there any outsourcing, surveying, you know, going out to the community? What kind of things, you know, are we missing on our website? What kind of things would you like to see? You know, I know from, you know, some of the things that I do in my day job, there's a lot, there's some things that I think could be streamlined for access and whatnot. So just wondering if there's any kind of outreach in regards to the website revamp, or is it just a freshening of look and missing pages and?
So there will be an audit of all of the content. It'll have to be for the migration to occur. So there's currently like six hundred and fifty pages, I think. And we'll have to, we'll likely scale that back. Outreach will be mainly internal with department heads so they can review the content in their areas. And if there are things missing that they've identified, for instance, Public Works continually gets questions on something that's not addressed in the Public Works content on our website, then it would be the subject matter experts that will supply that information to me.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thanks for being here. Next up is Information Technology and our Information System Coordinator, Dwayne, is here today.
Good morning, or good afternoon. We've been busy the last couple of months focusing on updating systems, databases, switches, servers, everything. Completing some tasks from our transition of the data center and the disaster recovery site last year. And just completed the migration of the Microsoft three sixty-five backup. For project work, we got Brian McGarry, the technician working on the disposal of phones. That's one of his projects. The other one is the implementation of security keys as we continue to push for a passwordless environment. Or else it's been a significant amount of time on the VADAM migration project. VADAM is our corporate financial suite, covers financials, taxes, utilities, cemeteries, and so on. And we've got some preparation work done on our upcoming computer replacement projects. So laptops and laptops will be replaced this year. There's a significant amount of effort there and that'll happen in six to nine months. And we're just working there as well with the RPE processes on the website. Do you have any question to that?
Go ahead, Counselor Hanson.
The person that was doing the survey with us for IT, what we use, what's really working well, what's not working well, where did that process at that?
Colin, do you have any update on that?
We're waiting on the report.
Okay. Dwayne, is there any concerns about staff or, yeah, staff, I guess, using AI, the new AI apps and stuff like that? Does it affect our computer systems?
So I'm gonna say no. We've got a limited implementation of AI. An example of something that is in place would be a voiceover system on the phones, fairly simple point products. There's nothing significant that we're doing in-house in terms of the AI project or release. There might be something in the website depending on vendors and what their, where their interests lie. But there's nothing significant in terms of the applications that we use primarily.
Okay, okay. Just wondering, because I know a lot of people are using it nowadays. So I thought I better check and make sure, you know, you end up getting weird stuff on your emails and you wonder if that's because of it or?
Yeah, email is one of the primary vectors for phishing attacks. We saw a fourfold increase in twenty twenty-four in that type of activity. So it's, there's a lot of it. You just, you can't get away from it from the most part.
Yeah.
But what we focus on is security awareness. So we're trying to make sure that people know how to look at an email, for example. It was asked the last time I was up here whether or not we can provide additional training there. And we have in terms of anybody who fails those tests, those phishing tests can be prompted to go to a training site. And Brian is working on putting together another, another round of invitations to that type of thing.
Okay, is there any other questions for Dwayne from council? No? Okay, thanks so much for being here. Okay, on to our Finance Department and our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. McClure.
Thanks, Mayor Jones. So for us right now, finance team is in the throes of trying to finish up the number of the entries for the year end. Our auditors are coming in the end of March here. So we are in a good position to be totally ready for them this year, which is fantastic. Obviously, we're looking through capital budget today. We will, our goal is to have an operations budget for council to be looking at at the March twenty-fourth meeting. One of the challenges we're facing is just the break, the breakout of the account structure and then how that affects how the budget is, meaning that we've got new accounts. So it's trying to match up the new accounts with the correct budgets and to see where they kind of land for, for the whole team. So that's, that's kind of what our main focus is right now. One thing I will note just on the finance piece is that we did get the RDKB services listing out. And a good announcement, I guess, maybe is instead of collecting seven million, three hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars, it's dropped to seven million, three hundred and thirty thousand and sixty-four dollars. So, I mean, chicken joke, only a hundred and eighty bucks or so. It's not going to be very helpful. So it'll be super challenging. I know the board was working hard on trying to find areas to to pull back on. Obviously, again, just to repeat myself, the big driver here and we knew that it was coming was the portion of the sewage treatment upgrade, the fact that the cost of construction is significantly than what was originally budgeted for. The grant obviously doesn't change. So therefore, that offset to fund that project will be a thirty-year loan. Once the construction is complete and the borrowing costs for that is what's causing the major increase in the service for twenty twenty-five. One thing that will be good to note is that after this amount is set there, it may change incrementally with inflation. But you're not expecting to see jumps like this consistently. That was one of the thoughts that I thought of was kind of doing it over years, but they've decided to do is sort of all in one jump in twenty twenty-five. Don't know if anybody has any questions, but I'm happy to answer them.
I see no questions. Thank you very much. Okay, so I just want to say thank you to staff for being here today and doing the reports. And you're welcome to stay if you want. You can stay online if you want, or you can also leave, feel comfortable leaving. Okay, on to our staff report. Oh, sorry.
I'm just going to mention David's here because he really likes council meetings and he wants to watch. So just so you know.
Okay, we're on to item number six, and that's the staff reports. And the recommendation is before council to consider and resolve to receive more information, the bylaw enforcement report, the building department report, and the report of invoices paid for municipal services. Are there someone to, thank you? All those in favor?
Well, we can, we can receive them as I may have a question.
Oh, okay.
The invoices.
Invoices. Okay, Ms. Butler has.
I just wanted to talk about how it should go. So what should happen is we should move, it should be put on the table, any discussion. Then we ask questions and then we put.
So it's moved. Yeah, Counselor Butler moved it. So it's on the table. Any discussions?
Yeah, thank you to the chair. Yeah, I did send that an email. There's some amounts of, I just want to question, not questioning the authenticity or validity or the accuracy. It's just, these are amounts that kind of jumped out at me and I'm not recognizing the payees. Central Square Technologies for forty-four thousand eight oh two.
So that is our annual VADAM software. Central Squares is the, I guess, the ownership for, for financial software. So that's what that is.
Thank you. Classic displays for forty-four thousand plus.
That was the purchase of the nice snowflakes and different decorations that we've been putting up.
Okay.
Bowls and that sort of thing.
Dark Trace Holdings for forty-two thousand.
Yeah, that is our cybersecurity software. It monitors traffic in and out on our system.
And Lower Columbia Community for twenty-five grand plus.
So that will be, I think you like to say it, LCCDTS.
Okay.
So that was their final payment after they finally signed the contract.
Thank you. And then finally, just a comment on the WorkSafe BC, fifty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. I guess my question is, is that a monthly amount or is that a one-time amount?
So it's a quarterly amount. So we pay on the quarter. It actually will be one of the lower amounts because as staff start to turn the corner of being, their wages being over a certain level. So we pay a lot in WCB. The sector itself, public sector, is a high amount and we've had a bit more of a hit with some of our usage. And so then we have a premium rider on that as well. So.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Okay, any other questions? I have a question on the bylaw enforcement report, though. Just a quick one about, I see the number for the homeless was twenty-one. I'm wondering what kind of calls those were.
Your worship? We'll have to get back to you if you, oh, that item is, you can do that and send out a separate email.
I just wondered if you had a general idea. Okay, so if there's no other questions, we'll. So we've moved it and we just need all those in favor to receive the reports. That was Carrie. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an application for rezoning of eighty-three twenty-three Old Wanita Road. And I think Ms. Butler's gonna take that one.
Thank you. Through the council. So this lot is located just near the top of the hill of Old Wanita Road before it intersects Highway twenty-two A. The lot is currently zoned R one. R one does allow for the proposed four-unit building. However, rezoning it to R three will provide a smaller yard setback. And this would be better suited for the construction of a four units on this sort of unique topography of this lot, which is overlooking the river. At the same time, council's also being asked to consider the development variance permit to allow for parking without allowance of a yard area in the front of the units. So if you've been up there, you've seen the other townhouses. They don't have any green space or yard space in front of their driveways. So this would be the same for this fourplex. Where, as staff are recommending moving the application to the bylaw readings as this development will provide some multi-family housing stock, which is very limited in the trail area. And there's not a public hearing required for this type of zoning application.
That's all I have. Okay, thank you. Is there any questions before we move the recommendation? Okay, the recommendation before you is that council consider and resolve that the required readings of zoning amendment by law number twenty-nine sixty, twenty twenty-five be considered at the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting. Is there someone to move that? Thank you, Counselor Benson. All those in favor? That was Carrie. And the second recommendation is that council consider and resolve that subject to final adoption of bylaw number twenty-nine fifty, twenty twenty-five, council approved the issuance of a development various permit to the property located at eighty-three twenty-three Old Wanita Road to vary section thirty-eight A of the zoning bylaw to allow off-street parking in the front yard as per zoning bylaw number twenty-five oh three, two thousand and two. Counselor Hanson, a sec. Everyone, all those in favor? Thank you. That was carried. Hey, looks like we might have some housing happening. That's exciting. Item C, we have another application for rezoning of fourteen fifty-one Second Avenue. And I believe that Ms. Butler is going to do this one as well.
Yes, thank you to the chair. So this rezoning application for fourteen fifty-one Second Avenue is in regards to short-term rental. Currently, this property is zoned C two major neighborhood commercial zone, which does not allow for short-term. In order for the applicant to provide short-term rental, they will need to rezone to the R one A large lot residential. I think the report's pretty clear on why they want short-term rental. And at this time, staff is recommending that the proposed zoning amendment be moved forward by doing the required first and second readings at March twenty-fourth, followed by a public hearing, which is required for this type of zoning change at the April fourteenth, followed by third and fourth readings of the proposed zoning amendment by law either at the April fourteenth or April twenty-eighth, regular meeting following that public meeting.
Okay, any questions?
Counselor Hanson. More, more, I guess, a comment than a question. I'm really happy to see these individuals taking the initiative to build some workforce housing for, you know, healthcare, which, you know, brings us to something that we're desperately needing is more workforce housing in our community. As opposed to doing it, I mean, in this case, I get it, but we really do need to increase that. And, and where the location of this home is, you do have a combination of residential and a couple of offices that are only during the day that are open for that kind of mixed use in that area. And so with parking and whatnot, you know, during the evening or afternoons when there's businesses are closed, that would allow for more street parking in that location. So thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll put the recommendation forward. And that is that council recommend that the required readings of zoning amendment by law number twenty-nine fifty-one, twenty twenty-five be considered at the March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting. Counselor Hanson, all those in favor? That was Carrie. Thank you. Okay, so we have some other reports here and under item number seven, and it's the diverse family roots report. And an application from diverse family roots requesting a grant in aid in support of R three SAT twenty twenty-five project.
Point of order. There's one more under, oh, sorry, under D.
Oh, sorry, the capital budget. Yes, I skipped over that. Sorry, Colin.
That's okay.
Okay, item D is the general capital budget. Go ahead. Thank you.
So Mayor Council, we had set these documents out last week. Right up front, it was just there was a concern, I think, that just overall on whether or not if council wanted to attend a Keeping it Rural conference, that would there be enough funding? And then so just one of the things I think is important to do is to sort of show, here's what the budget was for twenty twenty-four conferences. And here's how it got allocated. And you can see that we had, we're just slightly under budget there. I didn't change the conference's budget for twenty twenty-five. And you will see that currently, without anybody putting their hand up and saying, I want to go to the Keeping it Rural, which Ms. Lucini was kind enough to kind of do a, again, an estimation on what it would cost per person. So it's there. You do see on the AKBLG, the FCM and UDCM being in Victoria, much lower than, than it was in Vancouver. But you'll see that there's right now, based on what we have, are committing to, as far as we know, based on budget, there is funds left over for those that would like to go to the Keeping it Rural. So wanted to share, first of all, you know, my thought process is of not changing the budget, so the budget would stay the same. And if that is okay with council, I know that we have. And if that is, uh, okay with council, I know that we haven't gone through all the numbers yet, but that if there were some individuals that were interested in going to Keeping It Rural. That that funding would be available for that. And, um, and again, I believe if you want to attend. The registration is coming up pretty quickly. Am I correct on that, Ms. Lucini?
It's open.
It's open? Right. Now, um, some of you may not be aware, but I believe, uh, Council Martin had shared, uh, the, I think people have found it. In, informative and, uh, educational, but, uh, and he, I think he'd shared some of the documents on it. Happy to, uh, send out the, the agenda or the document that the council was unaware of. Just wanting to let you know that I think that, um, if everyone decided to go, I'm not saying everyone did, that, that you would still be inside your budget or very close to it if you wanted to, to make that decision. Right now. Well, I, sorry, yeah, I think, I think that if you even just wanted to, um. Resolve that if someone wanted to attend, that the funding is available to do that. Most of the times what we see in the conference's budget for council has been sort of this AKBLG, FCM, uh, and, and, and UDCM. And so that's sort of where we've got, there is some additional funding. Um, that's, I think, an allowance. And if you, I think part of it is. Giving an opportunity for council, if someone wants to go, that they would have permission and the funds are there and allowing you to, to make that registration.
Like some of, through the chair, I think some of this was, there was like hybrid options too, wasn't there for?
You know, fair enough. Yeah, we had just put in sort of if someone wanted to attend in person, cause there was a question about, again, feedback that it had been something that others had attended and had found it educational and informative.
Counselor Martin.
I'd like to.
Okay, remember the dates.
Is there anybody else that's interested? Cause I think what we should be doing is passing a motion. Um, that can be reconfirmed at the next meeting, but this will allow to get registration in. I'm interested. You're interested? And Counselor Butler, did you?
Yeah. It's possible, no, just to look at your calendars.
I think it just, even if we get a resolution for a placeholder, if, if, if one's to attend, or, or there's just many that would like to go, or if all of you wanna go.
I'm actually gonna be in Kelowna kind of right around when that time happens anyways.
So I would suggest that we just put a motion on the table that, uh, council approve, uh, three members of council. Attending the Keeping It Rural Conference.
For three members today?
Yeah.
Did Doug wanna go?
Sure, Counselor.
Oh, I don't know. Counselor Wilson, are you interested in going to the, the Rural Summit in Kelowna?
Sorry, just something myself. Yes, I would be for sure, uh, depending on who else wants to go.
Yeah. So I wonder, um, to you, Butler, if it would be more inclusive just to say, like, council, at this point in time, can find going? I mean, I kind of expect that some may or some may not, depending on calendars, but the funding is available.
So the motion would be that council, um, approve attendance for the Keeping It Rural Conference. For all council members to be held June and then the dates, whatever those are.
From tenth to twelfth, tenth to twelfth, twenty-five. Okay, is there someone that wants to move that? Thank you, Counselor Butler. Okay, all those in favor? Yes, that was Carrie. Thank you.
And it will be confirmed at the next regular meeting.
So, um. I know the council, we had kind of gone through this document at the last. Meeting that we held, it was a bit more, I think, uh, I would say rushed in the sense that it didn't, hadn't been provided to council ahead of time, so they were seeing it for the first time. Uh, did go through it with staff, made some adjustments and, um, and I have a few things to point out. And, you know, didn't necessarily wanna go through it line by line, but I wanted to cover maybe some of the areas where, um, where things had changed. And highlight a couple, maybe just even give a bit more detail on a couple of items that, um. That, uh, before, maybe, I guess, I would say went over more quickly than maybe would have been appropriate. I did note that in, on the second page of the document, under transportation capital, we're seeing yellow forty-five thousand for the next couple of years. Um, that's sort of what we talked about, uh, earlier today about streetlight decorations. And so, uh, I missed that on the last one, so I wanted to highlight that particular item. The other one I wanted to give a bit more detail on to council is the intersection improvement set second and global. And, uh, just, um, wanting to make it clear that this is, is a kind of a combined, uh. Combined strategic priority, I guess, would you would say? One is, it's helpful with active transportation. And the other part, um, relates to the, uh. Um, well, not only safety, but I guess traffic calming. I know that we've had, uh, some, yeah, come to council and concerned about what's happening on, on second avenue. And part of that is that the, on the corner, there're gonna be some kind of sense of, uh, curb, you know, a lot of times they call them bump outs. Uh, and then that's also going to sort of, um, close the gap on people trying to get across the street. Uh, especially for a lot of pedestrian traffic. We've got students heading out there today, jail crow. And, uh, so this, by having that bump outs, it makes a, first of all, I think, a bit more visible that you're out on that bump out. And it also makes the distance shorter to get from one bump out to the other. Uh, and at the same time, having that narrowing can be, uh, a very positive effect on calming, uh, the traffic down. And these, of course, would be even a little bit more, um, inflated on the highway side. So people coming off the highway down that way. So. Um, I just wanted to speak about that, cause I know that, um, a couple of factors, active transportation and, um, and also just safety overall, uh, is one of the, the features for this particular project. Yes?
Was there, um, was there a study done whether or not it would make sense to add a light or a four-way stop there or a flashing crosswalk? Because of all of the, it's very hard to turn left while they're there, coming out of the hospital. We have so many seniors, you know, and kids and young kids and buses. You know, I, I think I agree with the bump outs. I think that's great, especially with that handy store there, the little corner store. If there is a vehicle, you cannot see the crosswalk at all. You cannot see if there's children there. So is there any studies that have been done, you know, identifying whether or not that should be additionally to the bump outs? Anything extra done?
Uh, yes. And so my understanding is, is that in designing this, that we would have the ability to put up a sort of, um, flashing lights for pedestrians as well. I, I hadn't, uh, don't believe in, I guess, good that you're here, uh, Mr. Gorehead. Uh, I don't believe there was a word or kind of wiring being put into the traffic lights itself. I don't know if you wanna speak to that.
Yes, uh, we did do a full study on that intersection and same kind of thought process, um, behind a warrant and, um. For additional crossing measures, and it wouldn't meet that threshold for that. Um, additionally, second avenue is what we define as a collector road. So we wanna try and stop like a four-way stop there, because that is the throughway of traffic and the main artery in and out of that section of town. Um, so it's, it's a very high threshold to put some kind of traffic control limiting second avenue. Um, and the reason being is you would then force traffic to Third Avenue, um, and just increase traffic loads on there. So when second avenue is built. To handle those traffic loads, so you don't wanna divert that traffic with, with any of that.
But imagine a back-up to the bridge too, then.
Exactly, yeah. Yes.
But I like the flashing lights for crossing everything.
Yeah, and they're much, they're much simpler now, um, in, in that context than, say, a highway. Um, there are, um. Models out there that can just are mounted to tell as far as posts like stop signs, um, and just pedestrian activated.
And I think too, uh, it's a great question, uh, Counsel Hanson. And I think part of it is by having a bit of that calming, maybe that slows the vehicles down a bit and allows people to, to get out, um, and or and or. If they do try to get out, that there isn't a high-speed, uh, you know, vehicle coming the other way, moving their gaze, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I have a question to add to that, though. Is there any plans to put any of that, um, flashing lights up on Roslyn Avenue? Um, but we had the discussion at the gulch for the bus stops and.
It's not our road, right? So that's one of the challenges. It's highway, right?
It would be much more involved.
Yeah, I still think, yeah, we need to have that discussion, though. Okay.
Counselor.
Go ahead.
To the chair, well, we're on transportation and David's here, he probably answered his question. You're coming back over Second Avenue and you're gonna turn right to head towards the bridge at the lights. And I believe it might be, uh, Ministry of Transportation boxes on the left-hand side. When you're coming through that intersection, and I've had a lot of people make comment, it's very difficult. You gotta have your vehicle coming out quite ways, like those boxes are in a location. Just try it next time you guys are going through that intersection. You probably, you might have noticed it already. You, you know the ones I'm talking about? Is that an industry of transportation issue? Okay.
Yeah, that would be the electrical system for the traffic.
It's just, it really blocks the vision of vehicles and sometimes people might be speeding coming down that road, so. Yeah, just, just wondering. Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, Ministry of Transportation. That'll be a. A question we can ask them. Okay. Sorry, I jumped there. And we'll see a bit, uh, more of this, but this is on the future vehicle and equipment purchases. And so, uh, met with, uh, the fleet manager. And, uh, so a couple of things that we came out of the conversation that I had. One of the, you know, especially because we were seeing this putting, you know, our equipment request putting a lot of pressure on the reserve. Um, and so after talking through a number of the purchases, some of them were spread out a bit, the, some of those being the mobile equipment. Uh, we are looking at, uh, buying a brine tank, uh, to be able to put on the back of a truck. And you will see that very common in a lot of our communities. And that's, uh, you know, the goal of that for, uh, individuals that are wondering, well, why would we, you know, put a brine basically, so. Uh, is that if we can put that in some of our streets, especially in some of the areas, um, that are steeper. That the, when we get that snow, which is usually, you know, the early snow. Where you end up with, you know, say, it's a minus one, minus two. And people, it's wet, and people drive over it. As soon as they drive over it, now it's compact, now it's becomes like a nice skating surface. Uh, the brine helps that to be able to be scraped off very quickly and not, uh, kind of adhere to, um, the pavement the way that it does if it doesn't have brine on it. So that's one of the features that, um, that we would like to be able to use that for. The other feature is, is that, uh, being able to put the desiccresent down, we do contract that out. Uh, this would allow us, if we wanted to, to be able to take on some of that work ourselves. So kind of, uh, uh, interesting, uh, process there. Uh, some of the other, uh, purchases in the future years had to do with either, uh, attachments to, uh, the new, uh, loader that we got. Uh, flail mower, which helps us, uh, cut back some of the areas where, uh, we do get brush, uh, kind of, um, again, hampering people's views. Uh, and or, you know, being, uh, problematic. Uh, the other big piece that we went through on the outer years in particular and is what pieces of equipment are we replacing? So if we're replacing, for example, the wheel loader in twenty-twenty-seven, if you look back at the original value for that, it would have been higher. Uh, because I asked, I said, you know, usually when we have a big piece of equipment that we have purchased like that. We have the old piece of equipment. And so usually you trade that in. And so no trade-ins had been incorporated into any of the, uh, the equipment that we were looking at purchasing. So one of the questions that we looked at was saying, well, let's look at what a value is. We know that can change over time. But for the most part, that takes some pressure off what the expectation is and, um. Allows us to be, um, within, living within our means as far as trying to replace equipment and with the amount of reserve that we have available. Now, in saying that, and we'll look at the reserve balance as we go forward. If we, just based on what we did the work here, instead of being in a deficit in five years, we're actually at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in surplus. Um, I do have a note that if, um, you know, as we are working with the fleet manager. Is, uh, being able to charge out the equipment in a way that allows us to not only cover the oil, gas repairs for it, but also for the fact of replacement. Um, and so I would suggest that we may be able to bump up the allocation that goes to reserve. Uh, based on that internal charge that we are, that we currently, right now, uh, we've been mostly focused on, you know, being able to just cover gas and oil and repairs. So even in the current year, I think that we've got, uh, uh, the ability to put some additional money into the reserve based on how we're charging the equipment out. And when I say that, meaning it's important, you know, if you've got a truck and it's a hundred thousand dollars, that, uh, and it's getting used every, every day or, you know, most of the year. That, uh, the hundred thousand we pay upfront, but then we amortize that each year ten thousand. But we should be putting aside not only that gas and oil, but, you know, a chunk of money each year, knowing that inflation's going to happen, but trying to keep it in line so that that reserve is healthy enough. To replace the equipment as it's being used and as being charged out on the jobs that we use it. Um, we have a pretty, like I said, right now, we put three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in. I think that we'll, based on some of the work that we're doing, that we can get that number up. And that will help, uh, fund this reserve. And also, I think, gives a clear or a better picture of. You know, when we use the snowplows and when we use the equipment that we do in the jobs that we do, that that's reflected in the cost of doing that work. So again, of one of those ongoing kind of financial tinkering, we've got a good system, we wanna make it better. And I don't know if anybody has any questions on that. Oh, yes, Counsel Hanson.
Sure. Um, the large field mower, we replaced one last year.
Uh, we had the budget for it.
Okay.
Could have got it, but it was, for me, I said, why would I buy field mower and have it kind of arrive in November and then sit out until we would need it in April?
So we're taking that out of last year's budget and putting it into this year's budget, and it's gone up, uh.
Yes. Yes, no, and it's a fantastic point, because it's very, one of the other. Parts of the conversation is you'll notice above under the wheeled excavator. You'll see that we budgeted three fifty. And the actual was three seventy-three.
Yeah.
So the difference on that was, uh, PST. So, uh, the purchaser bought the piece of equipment for three forty-nine, which is great, you're under budget, but. You know, I think sometimes there's a. If, if it's not explained like, hey, we get the GST back, but you don't get the PST back. So that's why you'll notice a lot of these numbers now. Uh, I've asked for, okay, what is the purchase price plus any, you know, any kind of, uh, you know, what do they call it, delivery charge or PST or anything like that? Let's give the full cost. And so that's why you're seeing, uh, the large flail mower, uh, field mower going up in price. Yeah, so that will accurately reflect what we're expected to pay. And it should arrive here, uh, like I said, within the next month. So.
Oh, better questions. And the loader-mounted snow blower, we currently have one.
We, we, we have two, actually.
And we're replacing one that's at end of life.
Yes, uh, what we've decided might be the best way to do that, um. Counselor Hanson, is to actually take that unit and, um, place it at, it is at end of life, but to place it at the airport. Uh, and the goal there being is that. Not very often they would need anything like that, but then we also have it internally as a team, because getting any, there's no trade-in values or anything. And then rather than scrapping it, it would be something that, uh, on a big snow day, that that might could help them with clearing up the runway. Any area. Yeah. Okay. So going on to, um, next page. And, uh, that was basically just Tony O T M C and, uh, and the talc. Uh, one thing, and I hope that I don't get it not invited to the, uh. To the kid's birthday parties, but we did push the climbing wall feature out a couple of years. It was sort of one of those, as we look through the, uh, the nice to have over the need to have, that got bumped out a couple of years. So, uh, that's one of the changes that you'll see in there. Um, also, the other part is that some of the gym cardio equipment pieces, uh, the goal there is is also revenue, uh, generating is the idea. So that we purchase some equipment which will allow some of the work to be done by our, um, individual that sort of operates the gym. So there's sort of a, um, you know, again, that focus on purchasing equipment that not only needs to be replaced, but also allows us to generate further income.
Counselor Hanson, sorry.
No, this is, this is why we're here. Please, please ask the question.
So I noted there was, um, in our asset management, uh, summary repairs, uh, earlier in the budget. And then we have TMC. Now, I understand just in the last month or two, there was some leaking in the kids' rink. Uh, was that roof or was that condensation from the HVAC? Is that scheduled for repair? Um, just cause if we now have this brand-new kids' rink and now we've got leaking in a garbage can out in the middle of the ice, what does that look like?
It's sort of teaches them to be wary of the defenseman.
If the water's full.
If the water's full.
No, it wasn't related. It was interior, like grain and stuffers, um, and those are the.
Through the chair, um, would it be appropriate to, like, share your screen, thinking for people watching later to, for accessibility?
Great question. Yes, I, I did that last time and, uh, sometimes, sometimes forget. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Should I start over? Okay. So, um, again, as I think Council's been very aware, uh we've got the major projects here is the uh Kaminko Arena and door replacement. Those thankfully have been already tendered, results have been received, and uh and we're, we're good to go on that, we will put the deposit down on the boards. Um, the uh HVAC recovery project is out, um. It's coming pretty quickly here, though, as far as expectation of of um any.
Uh, end of the month.
End of the month.
Tender closes and that will come to Council.
Yeah. And, and I think that Mr. Moore had wanted to preempt uh the potential of getting that result and signing that quickly, that it may come to a committee of the whole and for the uh council meeting, all in one meeting. Uh, just because of, again, of getting these prices, especially with tariffs and people being really willing to say, yes, we will get you these. It's one of the concerns and fears that we have is that the rooftop units themselves have a lot of sheet metal in them, we know that there are going to be aluminum and steel tariffs coming on. And so just again, wanting preempt maybe some of those questions that we might get, and, and yes, we're doing the best that we can. Just seem to be in a unique time right now on, on things like.
Through the chair, just if we can ask if, once you get it, if we can have it as soon as, if we're voting on both the same day, as soon, so if we have questions, we can.
Please, thank you for that, yeah, yeah, we will do that. Um, but you could kind of see the uh T M C's getting a lot of love, got a lot of love last year and it's getting a lot of love this year too, so. Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna move on then to. So on the park side, uh we um have some continued work at the Brother Park and the Grandstand. Uh, we also have uh some other fieldhouse requirements over the next couple of years, really key though, that we make sure that our partners at the school district uh twenty years are committed to and signing off on providing the funding to make these projects go forward, as they are forty percent served. Under to that. Um, we are looking at doing the McBride Street Playground, and so that is another one, like we've done two last year, so we've got another one to upgrade, which is really positive. Uh, we are looking at that tree assessment. And uh we're also not on top of the tree assessment, we are doing some money set aside for the tree, the Gyro Park tree replacement. And we also have a master plan as far as some of that work goes on, we'll see how those fit together. Um, one thing I did forget to mention, and I didn't put it in yellow, is that I had also put in, in twenty twenty-six, um, the rock ball assessments. Uh, uh, because again, as part of our strategic priorities, we committed to working on those projects, so that was another item we forgot to mention. The other part that uh I put, that we've, we put in place and that we've talked about with uh with staff was the Bliski Park and the National Renovation, so I mean, kind of still waiting on the actual committee that's part of the Little League to come forward and, you know, really sort of uh give us more details, so we have a placeholder there. But part of that, uh you'll notice is that we have uh to offset that four fifty, not all being on the city, is that I budgeted for fifty thousand in donations, which I don't think is unreasonable. Uh, the other portion that I've uh worked on is probably another two hundred thousand dollars in grants. We know that um Fruitvale and Nelson was successful through the, the Blue Jays uh getting their project, so the fact that we've got Little League and we're gonna have Nationals and provincials, I think there's a, a good likelihood that we'll be able to get grants to be able to cover some of those contracts.
Um, just as an aside, they are coming as a delegation perhaps to the March twenty-fourth.
Oh.
Meeting to, to Council on whether.
Right, thank you. Yeah, um, for the most part, again, I'm gonna move off of this, and again, if anyone has any questions, we can always come back to it. Uh, but I'm gonna move on to the documents that I provided on the capital projects reserve. And capital projects reserve had been building because we've been working on some of these projects, and you'll see that anyway, at the um, currently, we have five million, we've had a big year of spending. And that got us, again, Daniel Street Projects is finished, we got Rowage finished. Um, we got um our portion that was for the uh the heat upgrade project, so there's some big funding pressures that were, that were on for this current year, and you can see that at the end of the year, we're expecting that closing balance to be still close to four. Uh, Council has been providing and uh funding, you can see that uh budgeted in twenty twenty-five of, of three point, almost three point two million dollars. And uh but we also have another big year, obviously with the T M C being a, you know, one of the largest components of that. Um, at the same time, some of the other special projects that we have in place, uh we are looking at using the growth funding that the province provided us last year, or yes, a little bit last year. So that funding will be something, so it's not going to put pressure on our taxes, so that's, that's the hope as long as we get the numbers in for that. Um, but um, we have, obviously, we had a budget in the, just in the capital projects, there's of eleven million last year, and we spent six. Uh, this year, we're at thirteen-six. And again, I would hope or I would expect that we will um if we're successful this year, that we will be in a place where we're, are spending that. A reason being that um if we're successful on the daycare and successful on some of the other um demolition work, and we know that we're already in that in that process of getting the T M C love going on, some of the other numbers become a bit smaller in between, uh but focus on some of these bigger projects, and so I think that we will um see the pressure. And you'll see that if we are successful, that the reserve drops down to a million one. And then if you look into twenty twenty-six, uh we kind of um you know, no, not bad, but then you go into twenty twenty-seven, and then it's in twenty twenty-eight, and one of that big uh projects there, you'll see under Public Works, and that's Glover Road. And again, we're still not there yet, but that's us funding that Glover Road project. And uh being able to do that um and then pay back, what we can see, putting pressure on in twenty twenty-seven, so borrowing from surplus and then being able to pay that back. But you start to see at the end of twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight, drops, yes, and then twenty twenty-nine, we start to climb again. So I'm not gonna say for sure that in five years from now, there isn't some new capital project that has to happen, but I am noting that we are sort of uh taking on a number of big projects over the last number of years, and then likely we'll take a bit of a breather probably inside, you know, certainly at T M C and things like that. Uh, other areas certainly gonna need some, some help, but now you start looking at a project like, um, like um Glover Road, so again. Uh, but I guess gave me some comfort that, A, we weren't in the hole. Uh, one that we're also starting to climb out of it, that we have by the time we get to twenty twenty-eight, that yes, we're putting a lot of pressure on the reserve, but also committing every year almost three and a half million dollars to capital every year, so that's sort of already baked into your budget each year. So that's a lot of work that can be done, and, and if there's a year where we, we have to, you know, pull in our claws and sort of uh have a quiet year, that will really, you know, fill up that. Uh, so then we'll just, and I will note too, and I may have to flip it, because I did uh kind of talk about here. I kind of kind of backwards, but say hypothetically, uh on the equipment replacement reserve, if we move to um instead of three fifty to three seventy-five, which is not a big jump considering the size of our budget, but you start to see where that continues to keep kind of a healthy balance in our uh, in our equipment reserve and as, as we go on for purchases of our equipment. Uh, that's, that's if we do an extra twenty-five, this is the next one that I was looking at and it's on the screen, is if we stay flat. We're still at, you know, not bad, but a hundred and sixty thousand dollars is sort of where the reserve is at the end of the five years, but that is a replacement of a lot of equipment that's going on over the next number of years. Um, now I don't have it up in front of me, but I, I emailed it out to Council, and so just bear with me while I share my screen on a different. It's one of the things I, I realized that I sort of um was remiss on sharing with Council was cancel culture. Uh, was the Community Works Fund. Because we had worked together as Council, we had said, hey, uh we know that there's a lot of pressure on the water fund. And if we are doing that, then um, you know, let's commit to using. Yes, okay, there you go, so I said this out as a separate document, but what I wanted to kind of show Council was hate to use it, but as a little bit of a relief fund, so that we, say, for example, we get some even in the current year, because we know we need to get the rink done, but say we get some results that aren't necessarily uh positive. Not saying that it won't, but if we don't, we have a little bit of a backup here, that we could say, you're still gonna move forward this project, we might have to pull from uh, for example, from the Community Works Fund, which is allowed for, again, upgrading a goal. You know, that could be a project that you might say, okay, well, we've got some pressures over here, let's use the Community Works Fund and, and, and fund that. And even if you did that, you would still have a good amount of funding in there. Also, sort of allows you a little bit of a hedge for when we get looking at um uh the uh replacement or the twinning of the of the, the pipeline down from the water plant. And, you know, what does that look like? We've got a budget, it's a big project, but if we needed to, you know, use some funding, we've got a little bit of a buffer sitting here right now. Um, so anyway, just wanted to share that with Council, because I think that it can be something that uh provides some concern uh overall. But you also don't want to just leave this funding here, because they do have their eyes on it as far as, you know, what you're doing with it, and we do have some major water projects to deal with, so we are allocating it towards that, at least that's right now, we've got built in the budget that whatever the grant is, is that's what we're putting towards whatever water project we have for the year. So uh, but I just wanted, I thought it was, I was remiss on not sharing with Council sort of what this balance is, and by allocating each year's annual allocation that we're getting to water, that we still have a bit of a balance in here that, uh, again, I think is a a good little buffer, just in case uh we run into any problems over the next couple of years. So, um for me, I guess a comfort level as your CFO saying, yeah, we have some big projects, yeah, we got a bit of buffer. There's definitely, if ever on a capital side of things, nice to know that we've already locked in what's happening with the green boards and floor. But finishing up the, the other HVAC project will, will be something that we're waiting on bated breath, I think, for sort of the results here at the end of the month. And because we'll be in that stage, we'll also be able to pivot if we see a result that someone that wants to get in here and do that, and if the price is over, we will obviously bring that back to Council to, you know, just to find out or say, hey, we're gonna need to cut back on one of our other capital projects, or maybe we use some Community Works Fund in another area to try to, uh, if we have some overages. And about that same time, we'll also be sort of the results that we're looking for, for being able to take care of uh the remediation and demolition of the uh uh, not out of Spokane and not out of Hana. We get a call today from a gentleman that knows a lot of history, he wants Council to consider trying just to keep just medical, hospital portion of the building only. He thinks that there's historical value, did have a good conversation with him, he did understand that it's attached, and he does understand that it's completely dilapidated, but he suggested that some other communities go in and put in like brand new windows and some facade on the outside to make it look like it, and then just leave it there. And I said, well, I said, Council really wants, you know, to use this property as much as there's some historical value um for you know, the revitalization of the downtown. He did understand that, he also told me that there's a mine shaft or a um, I guess, is it a a tunnel that runs from over here all the way over past to that, so. I said, you know what, if you have a chance, uh maybe phone me up and take me for a tour, I'd like to see some of these historical items, I said. Also, it would be really great if you would talk to Sarah Benson Lord, uh she's a, you know, curator of our museum, I'm sure that you're a person that she would love to, to chat with. But no decisions need to be made today, obviously, I'm just receiving it for information, I just wanted to get in front of, of uh, of Council, understand, you know, we got a couple of major projects obviously sitting out there, and then there's some big dollars attached to them. Uh, but they, um, you know, we do have a big grant as part of, well, grants actually covering basically fifty percent of some of those major projects that we have. And I think that they will be key to, uh, you know, stepping trail into the future opportunities, so.
Okay, I have, does Council have any questions? Because I just want to circle back to Rosson Avenue again. And the safety lights there, because, and David, you can help my memory a bit, because the last time we spoke about this, and we had the Ministry of Highways in, they did that report. They collected the data and said that it was out of their hands now, that it was up to the city of Trail to put any safety lights or crosswalks, et cetera, in that area. So that's why I'm bringing forward the flashing lights, again, at the bus crossings. And whatever else we can do up there to slow down traffic, because the Ministry of Transportation has taken it and given it to us to deal with.
Well, I think what they've said is it doesn't qualify.
Yes, okay, so it doesn't qualify.
Yeah, so if it doesn't qualify, then they don't pay for anything.
Right.
Right, which is, yeah, so of course, that's downloading, and again, if the city is willing to pay for the downloading, it's certainly something that is possible. But as a CFO, it's also one of those ones that um would be uh putting a lot of pressure on the taxpayer.
Well, I'm, I'm, yeah, I, okay. I just want to say that it was just reported out this afternoon that it was easy to put up the flashing lights, they weren't that expensive anymore.
No, so I think that you maybe misunderstood, so we're talking about at Second and Gopel, we're talking about a gap that would be you know, much narrower than trying to deal with Boston Avenue.
Okay. I, I'm just asking for flashing lights at the, at the school, at the crossing zone, so that's all. I'm looking for some kind of a safety um aspect of that area of the road.
Uh, well, we can certainly look into what that um, that looks like, um, I think part of it would be a concern would be for effectiveness. Uh, because if you're not having something that's hanging over, because you've got traffic on either side. But certainly, we can, we can look into what that looks like, and I think that when we talk about sort of like on the stop sign side, is if you're thinking if you're on Second and Gopel, that's a different situation than trying to have potentially four lanes of traffic and having something on the side of the streets, because we can't, we can't, for example, put um curb extensions out on on the, on the highway there without their permission. And they've already said that um it doesn't qualify for the extended type of swak or lighting, certainly we could talk to.
Okay, do you need a motion for that?
I don't think I need a motion to talk to.
To do a staff report on that, okay. Thank you. Is there any other questions? On the financial, okay. Thank you, Mr. McClure.
Through the chair.
Just curious, um, the um old bridge is not listed on here, we, I know we chatted about it in previous ones about having like a bucket for future, do you remember that?
I do.
Is it on here and I missed it?
It's not on here, but um it's short, here, I can share. Not so had committed to uh putting money aside, so we have a pot of money that I'm. So we're putting a hundred thousand dollars aside, so basically at the end of of twenty twenty-four here, we've got about five hundred nineteen with the expectation, as we carry on, that we would have six hundred and thirty-one thousand there. You can see by twenty twenty-eight that we'll have a million dollars, I don't know exactly how much it's gonna foster. Certainly heard um different stories that the steel might have value, that the wood may have value. But, yeah, we haven't done it.
I was just comparing to um our last year's, and that was one of those, we talked about since.
Remind myself to uh be sure that I share every reserve balance when I'm doing this, yes, thank you for the reminder.
Okay. So moving on to the other reports, item number seven. A diverse family roots, an application from the diverse family roots requesting a grant and aid in support of the R three set twenty twenty-five project. And the recommendation is that the application for a cash grant of five hundred dollars be well, need a motion from Council. Is there anyone may, uh, willing to make for, to approve or?
Was this for the?
We have a slot, approved or denied, so the motion would be to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Council Benson. All those in favor? That was carried, thank you.
Do you wish to be recorded as opposed? Uh, yes, I just didn't see whether we're only asking Trail and not Rhindell or where they're hosting the event, so. Okay. So yes? Yes. Yes.
May is there any questions for question period? Okay, item number nine is a resolution to rise from the committee of whole and that council considering resolve to rise from the committee of whole. Is there someone to move back, please? Counsel Butler, a second or please. Counsel, um, Cashall, all those in favor? That was Carrie, thank you. Um, we need a resolution to exclude the public. Recess the public meeting until six P M and immediately convene into a closed session. And the resolution is that pursuant to section, section ninety of the community charter, the public be excluded. From this portion of the meeting as the subject matter being considered relates to the following. The community charter, section ninety one one. And further, that public portion of the meeting be recessed until six P M. And that further, that council immediately resolve into the closed portion of the meeting. Counsel Hanson, Counsel Butler, all those in favor? That was Carrie, thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Yes. Thank you. I'm a bit easier for this. Do we have a minute?